There have been ongoing initiatives here in Los Angeles and throughout the country. Activists and city leaders say, "Action must be taken now."
We're talking about severe threats faced by human beings and other species across the globe.
And that's prompted 22-year-old Michael Zambrano from Pomona to join others in walking the Great March for Climate Action on March 1st.
I'm looking forward to just impacting different families along the way and different smaller communities. I know living in the bigger cities, we hear a lot about going green and the movement and renewable energy, but it doesn't seem like it reaches the smaller communities so much, so I feel to bring that in and learn from them also.
The Great March for Climate Action aims to create awareness among voters and leaders on the urgency of the climate crisis.
The Great March for Climate Action will start at the Port of Los Angeles in Wilmington and continue into Washington DC. The route is about 3,000 miles long, where people will be walking 14 miles a day for eight consecutive months.
We have refineries and other areas that greatly pollute Los Angeles. At the same time, we've taken some really strong environmental steps in the right direction, so I think we're a good place to look at because of that dichotomy.
The march will run through 12 states with camps at various sites. Organizers say there are numerous ways to get involved.
It really will be, you know, an opportunity to, if you can't march, to come see the camp sites, or if you can march for a day, an hour, a week, a month.
The Great March for Climate Action is expected to be one of the largest coast-to-coast marches in American history. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
For more information on the march or to sign up, go to climatemarch.org. Angelinos are coming together to take part in a worldwide movement that aims to end violence against women. Rasha Goel tells us about the One Billion Rising Initiative.
The dancing, the signs, the support at the steps of L.A. City Hall were to call attention to a global problem.
My mother was sexually abused as a child, and she killed herself as a result.
Jane Fonda, an actress and philanthropist, shared her experiences with sexual violence and abuse. She was among the supporters of the One Billion Initiative Los Angeles, a campaign calling attention to rape and violence against women globally.
We're not just ending violence against women and girls. We are really changing the world, and we're declaring what justice looks like in each and every community.
In Los Angeles, efforts have already been in place.
In every single truck stop, in every single liquor store, in every single workplace where we think people are being trafficked, we put up new signs that help those who are being trafficked today disproportionately women. More people enslaved today than ever in human history, to give them a route out.
The name of the campaign is derived from a United Nations statistic that states approximately 1 in 3, or 1 billion, women on the planet will be a victim of abuse or sexual violence in their lifetime.
It is true. I know more women than I should that have had, somehow had sexual assault or have been raped. And luckily for me, it's never happened to me, but I don't want it to happen to anybody.
It's a man's issue and a woman's issue. It's a human rights issue.
I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The One Billion Rising Movement started last February when people in 207 countries rose and danced in public gatherings to demand an end to violence against women and girls. Well, the start of a new year also means paying taxes from the year before, and the mayor got residents prepared to file taxes by launching free workshops on how to claim some of those hard-earned dollars back from Uncle Sam.
This summer, I'll be working a full-time job, trying to save up for a car. That way, I can drive myself from to school, back to work, and then back to my house.
Jose Morales will graduate Fremont High School this summer with plans to head to Santa Monica City College in hopes of transferring to UCLA. For him and others like him and their parents who may struggle to pay the bills, the mayor has launched a comprehensive campaign called Investing in Working Families, aimed at getting the word out to all Angelinos about free services available to them.
Over the span of the next two and a half months, Los Angeles will host more than 60 workshops, 21 at family source centers, and 42 at high schools.
Those workshops, launched on February 1st, have been and will continue to offer free services, including helping families file taxes, apply for financial aid, and even helping undocumented students apply for deferred action.
Regardless of your age, your income, grades, or immigration status, when it comes to financial aid, there is some assistance for everybody.
The workshops will also come in handy this tax season, assisting families to claim their earned income tax credit, and that could mean a maximum of $6,000 back in their pockets.
I helped a lot. Tough times.
There are many people who leave money back with the federal government or with state government, and we need to make sure we empower them with that education.
And with education on the resources available to them, the hope is families and students like Jose will be able to achieve their goals that much easier.
My dream's always been to be a police officer and hop out my community and move up to be a detective.
Other services include helping families enroll in covered California and connecting unbanked individuals to low-cost checking and savings accounts. Go to freetaxhelpla.com for more information on these free workshops. LAX hopes to recruit the airport workers of the future today. The airport recently hosted something of an open house for dozens of L.A. students at its annual Job Shadow Day. Anna Marcos was there.
Kira, a bomb-detection dog with the Airport Police K-9 Unit, helped warm up students at this Job Shadow Day at LAX. About 100 middle and high school students spent a day shadowing mentors in every area of airport duty, from operations to airline management, to FAA administration, TSA and Customs, and yes, the Airport Police K-9 Unit.
When you do apprehend a suspect, it's always rewarding to bring in a bad guy or locate a dangerous device to keep everybody safe.
What I found interesting today at the L.A. Airport is that I got to see the different planes and what FAA was about.
LAX does have a Gateways Internship Program in case any of these students are interested in an airport career once they reach high school.
Mentoring at Job Shadow Day gives the student a chance to test drive their career choice, and it also ensures that we have a trained aviation workforce going into the future.
So, were there any takers?
I was kind of stuck to my goal of being a forensic...
Doctor, I wouldn't want to deal with any airplanes. What I wanted to do was become the president.
I would want to be a basketball player and architect.
So, no airplane dance for you?
Well, I would like to get on a private jet when I'm playing basketball.
I saw the people in the cubicles, and they had like about four computers in each station watching all security, and I thought that was really interesting.
Is that something you might want to do?
Yes.
Make that one potential LAX aviation recruit for the books. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Schools that took part in Job Shadow Day included West Chester High, Orville Wright Middle School, St. Bernard High School, and Albert Monroe Middle School. City crews are added again on a mission to fill potholes in the North San Fernando Valley. Gil Reyes reports on round two of Operation Neighborhood Blitz.
Relief ahead for drivers in North Granada Hills, Porter Ranch, Chatsworth, and Northridge. Pothole repair is on its way, if it hasn't arrived already, and residents can thank themselves.
It's a great idea, and it also shows that Mayor Garcetti and his administration are very open and transparent and willing to talk and be with the neighbors and the community.
It's round two of Operation Neighborhood Blitz. A simple idea, really. Instead of searching for problems, the Bureau of Street Services simply asks neighborhood councils where repairs are needed. Crews go to work ASAP.
In a city this big, the people who know are the ones who live and work right there by these streets. You can help us do things faster and better. If we spend less time with city workers trying to find those potholes, that means there's more time that they can spend repairing those potholes.
It increases the influence and the power and the participation of the neighborhood councils. It really does bring city services to your doorstep.
The first round, launched over the summer, filled 15,400 potholes in six months.
When we started the program, we knew that we could create this great collaboration effort, but we didn't know how successful we were going to be.
Residents can also report potholes by calling the city's helpline, 311, or using the My311 app. In Granada Hills, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Street workers are also expected to fill potholes in North Hills, Mission Hills, and Panorama City on the slag of the Neighborhood Blitz. A change in the way LAPD officer-involved shootings are reviewed. Broadway Downtown is taking away a car lane in favor of more pedestrian space. Also, how to respect yet regulate street memorials. These stories and more in City Beats. The Los Angeles Police Commission has voted to adopt new language to existing policy that will allow the commission to consider an officer's decision to pull the trigger to his actions in the moments leading up to the shooting.
Inspector General recommends that this matter be corrected by clarifying the policy to include that adjudicators may consider, quote, "the tactical conduct and decisions leading up to the use of deadly force."
While the commission says it already looks at decisions and actions taken by officers prior to a shooting, Commissioner Robert Saltzman calls the clarification in the language of the policy significant. As Councilmember Jose Wezar's Bringing Back Broadway initiative celebrates its sixth anniversary, work to remove one lane of traffic in favor of expanded pedestrian areas has begun. Phase one, which is expected to be completed by the L.A. Department of Transportation by summer, is being referred to as the dress rehearsal. That's because quickly installed materials are being used to reconfigure the road from four to three traffic lanes while funding is secured to achieve the permanent build-out of the full-scale project during phase two. Councilman Wezar says the project shows the kind of commitment needed to reestablish the historic Broadway corridor as a premier destination for all Angelinos. The L.A. County Board of Supervisors has approved $4.1 million to pay for the restoration of the historic Fort Moore Pioneer Memorial Monument. While the monument is the property of Los Angeles County, the City of Los Angeles has also earmarked funding for the restoration of this often-forgotten historic resource on Hill Street. The Fort Moore Pioneer Memorial was dedicated on July 3rd, 1957, to commemorate the site of a Mexican-American war adobe fort. The restoration will likely include the reactivation of a water feature shut off in a 1977 drought. Informal street memorials like this one are commonly embraced as a way to honor loved ones killed on public streets, but can also obstruct the public right of way. That's why Councilman Mitchell Englander has asked the council, which has agreed, to instruct the bureaus of street services and sanitation to establish compassionate guidelines to allow for the display and removal of temporary street memorials. It was a community park that not many families would visit, but that's about to change thanks to a couple of large upgrades. Yana Kaye reports.
14-year-old Ethan Durant is practicing his climbing on this newly-installed rope at the Tarzana Recreation Center.
Things really well done, and it's just fun, climb around everything.
And now he'll have plenty of time to climb around as the community introduced two new play structures at the park with a ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Three, two, one, go!
It's really revitalizing this recreation center and providing a place for, a safe place for kids to be able to have fun, exercise, and build community.
The two new play structures were made possible by the hard work of the Department of Recreation and Parks and many community members.
I'm full with joy and completion. This was a labor of love. My children grew up at this park. They're now 11 and 14.
One play area, which is about 2,000 square feet, is for kids 2 to 5 years old, and the larger 6,000-square-foot play structure is for kids 5 to 12 years old. Now, what's really great about these two new play structures is that they offer the sun cover, so that kids of all ages can play all summer long. Even the big ones.
Yeah, they love it. It's all new, so it's a lot of fun. I like the, you know, the rubber stuff on the ground. That's pretty cool.
Something new at the park that'll get everyone on their feet. I'm Yana Kaye for LA This Week.
Park officials say they are working on a plan to offer movie nights during the summer. And in this week's list of things to do, a Sunday hike, an exhibit that looks at the history of L.A.'s Central Avenue and the San Pedro Art Walk. The hikes led by Griffith Park Ranger Ernie Ibarra for the next few months will be held on Sundays, and the next one will be on Sunday, March 2nd, at 8:00 a.m. from the Griffith Park Observatory parking lot to Trails Cafe, and then back on the same path. The hike is a 2.5-mile intermediate hike. Bring money to purchase food at the cafe or pack your own meal. The observatory is located at 2,800 East Observatory Avenue. Dogs are welcome but must remain on leashes at all times. Details can be found at Ranger Ibarra's Facebook page, which is facebook.com/rangerernie. Catch a free photo exhibit at the Los Angeles Central Library highlighting the history of African-American musicians and jazz clubs along Central Avenue in Los Angeles. The exhibit, part of the city's month-long celebration of African-American heritage, is on display now through Friday, February 28th. Central Avenue was the heart of the African-American community in Los Angeles from the '20s to the '50s and the heart of the rhythm and blues and jazz music scenes. The Central Library is located at 630 West Fifth Street. For information, go to lapl.org. On the first Thursday of each month, the artists, businesspeople, and entertainers of San Pedro celebrate the arts with an evening of open galleries and studios. Called the San Pedro Art Walk, the monthly event also features street vendors and live music in the downtown San Pedro Arts District. The next San Pedro Art Walk will be Thursday, March 6th, from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. between Fourth and Eighth Streets in downtown San Pedro. Go to firstthursday.com. That's one S.T. Thursday.com. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. A Guinness record was set recently in downtown L.A. as construction crews moved forward with the largest continuous concrete pour in U.S. history. Yana Kaye reports.
These green mechanical arms are pouring concrete deep below the ground, laying the foundation for downtown's Wilshire Grand project. But this huge undertaking has also cemented its place in the Guinness World Record for being the largest continuous pour ever conducted.
It means people are betting big on Los Angeles. It's the time to reinvest here, and I think it's just one of many projects that we have downtown and throughout the region that are bringing L.A. back.
In total, 2,100 truckloads of more than 21,000 cubic yards of concrete were poured over 26 straight hours at this hole at the corner of Seventh and Figueroa Streets.
We're going to see a real centerpiece for all of Los Angeles, and to continue to challenge ourselves, to continue to push the envelope in directions that downtown L.A. and the city of L.A. hasn't been before in the past.
The structure, developed by Korean Air, will be 73 stories and 1,100 feet tall, making it the tallest building west of the Mississippi when it is completed in 2017. Project officials anticipate the hotel will create 11,000 local construction jobs and will pump $80 million in tax revenue into the city's economy. I'm Yana Kaye for L.A. This Week.
The more than $1 billion project will feature 900 four-star hotel rooms and offices, restaurants, and retail space. Well, before we go today, we want to take a moment to say good luck and farewell to our station manager, Tony Agani, who is retiring. We want to thank him for over two decades of service to our station and to the city of Los Angeles. Tony, we wish you all the best. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lecityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
My name's Eric.
My name is May.
We are in Chinatown. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to just point your attention over here to your right, Franco, who's our sound man. It's his 15th anniversary today. Give him a big hand. Wave, everybody, Franco. Little Phil. Thank you very much. So, Wezar's here. Cross the... Thank you for all that you do. Please call the roll. Sergeants, let's get this place in line. Madam Clerk. Microphone.
Englander. Fuentes, Wezar, Caress, Corcoran, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Weston, Tim Evans, President Accor. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Parks moves. Ms. Martinez seconds.
Next is committed to resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wezar moves. Mr. Corretts seconds.
Mr. President, there's a request by member to continue item 19 to March 5th.
Without objection.
Would you like to run through the agenda at this time?
Yes. Members, we're going through the agenda.
Items 1 and 2 are items noted for public hearing. There are cards on both items.
Okay, we'll hold those special.
Items 3 through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held.
3 through 4. Members, do we have anything on 3? Ms. Martinez?
Mr. President, can I call item 12 special, please?
12 special.
14.
3 through 14. Any, Mr. Corretts?
Yes.
Hold it. Attention. This is an announcement from General Services Security. Okay, Paul.
Actually, General Services just wanted to be sure that people noticed that I wanted to continue item number 10 for two weeks.
Item 10 for two weeks. Very good.
And that's till March 18th.
March 18th. Next item.
Mr. President, council should vote on the remaining items.
Mr. President.
Mr. Wezar, I apologize.
13 special, please.
13 specials. Sorry, Mr. Wezar. No other specials, members called, so on the balance of the items, Madam Clerk, on the balance. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
10 eyes. Next item.
Items 15 through 19 are, items 15 through 18 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
All right, for considerations. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
10, thank you. All right, any specials on those? Now for consideration.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there are cards on items 15, 16, 17... Excuse me, Mr. President, there are cards on items 15, 16, 17, and 18.
All right, on those items, we'll hold for special. Anything in the balance?
No, Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
Present, but Scoob Phil.
I just wanted to, uh, to recognize in, in the audience, we have our great city controller, who was city controller for 16 years here, Mr. Rick Tuttle is in the audience there.
Rick Tuttle. All right, Rick.
Not only a mentor, but a, a friend and an amazing person.
Absolutely, Rick Tuttle, very good man, who sent those memos every two weeks. Mr. Tuttle, welcome. While we have presentations right now. Mr. O'Farrell, for the first presentation, please.
Where's the clock?
It was over there yesterday.
Good morning, colleagues. Mr. President, I would like to invite our city council president, Mr. Herb Wesson, to join me in welcoming a delegation from El Salvador this morning. Mr. Wesson. Colleagues, it gives me a great, uh, honor today, uh, to welcome the representatives from the El Salvador delegation visiting us, uh, this morning, who just made their way from San Francisco on a whirlwind trip, and here they are visiting us in Los Angeles. We welcome today Carlos Ramos, Mayor of the City of San Pedro Masoat, uh, El Salvador. And we also welcome Mr. Tomas Minero, Mayor of the City of Ciudad Delgado, El Salvador. Uh, and in case, in case not everyone is aware, the City of Los Angeles has the largest concentration of Salvadorans outside the Republic of El Salvador. And a large percentage of Salvadorans call the 13th District, uh, their home, and I am honored to represent the 13th District. In January of 2005, the City of Los Angeles became a sister city to San Salvador, establishing our sister cities relationship with, uh, Sa- uh, El Salvador, uh, and, and which represents a great opportunity not only for our two cities, uh, the City of San Salvador and the City of Los Angeles, but for our country to continue strengthening our friendship and our cultural and economic ties. Uh, before I continue, I would love to welcome our city council president, Herb Wesson, to say a few words.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. O'Farrell. I just want to, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, to welcome, uh, these two mayors to the greatest city on the planet, Los Angeles. We hope that you have a good trip, an informative trip, and if there's anything that we can do on the council to help you, don't hesitate to ask. Welcome to Los Angeles.
Thank you, very good, thank you.
And first, we would like to, uh, in, invite, uh, Mr. Tomas Minero, Mayor of the City of Ciudad Delgado, El Salvador.
Un saludo al señor alcalde Eric Garcetti, al honorable consejo de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, por esta distinción, pero además decir que aquí en Los Ángeles, California...
Greetings to the mayor of Los Angeles and also to this honorable council, uh, council. And I also want to say that in this city of Los Angeles...
Si. Bueno, agradecer esta, esta distinción y decir que aquí en Los Ángeles, California, es donde vive una de las comunidades más grandes de salvadoreños en Norteamérica y que también la influencia que tienen esta comunidad de salvadoreños en nuestro país es muy connotada para todos los destinos sociales, políticos y la construcción de la democracia que este gran país también nos ha ayudado a ir forjando en nuestra tierra. Muchas gracias por esta distinción.
I, I just want to thank the, the council and for this recognition and the city of Los Angeles, because Los Angeles is the city where we have the largest, uh, population of Salvadorans, and this has a great influence in our country, influence in democracy socially and economically. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Mr. Minero. And now we have Carlos Ramos, Mayor of the City of San Pedro Masoat. Mr. Ramos.
En primer lugar queremos agradecer y saludar al consejo, al concilio de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, a su presidente, y por supuesto al alcalde Garcetti, y por supuesto a quienes nos han antecedido, y queremos reiterar a nombre del pueblo salvadoreño de nuestras ciudades nuestro agradecimiento por toda esa solidaridad y esa bondad mostrada para miles y miles de salvadoreños que viven en esta gran ciudad de Los Ángeles. Así es de que a eso venimos a expresar nuestros agradecimientos y sobre todo, uh, que esto sirva también para estrechar aún más los lazos de cooperación entre nuestro pueblo del Salvador y este importante pueblo de los Estados Unidos de América. Muchas gracias.
Also, I, um, greetings to this council, to the president of the council, and to Mayor Garcetti, and I also want to indicate that, uh, I want to thank you for all the solidarity and generosity that you have shown to the Salvadorians that live in this great city, and this is helping to reinforce the collaboration in between the great city of El Salvador and the great city of Los Angeles.
And in addition to our colleague, council president Herb Wesson, uh, in Council District 10, also Council District 1, has a very high, uh, concentration of Salvadoran populations, and unfortunately Gil could not be here this morning, otherwise he'd be standing with us. Again, welcome to the City of Los Angeles. Bienvenidos al pueblo de nuestra señora, la reina de Los Angeles. Es mi profundo honor de recibir el, el alcalde Carlos Ramos de San Pedro Masoat y alcalde Tomas Minero de Ciudad Delgado, la republica de El Salvador. Al pueblo de nuestra señora, la reina de Los Angeles. Bienvenidos.
Mucho gusto, Mr. Farrell, good job. Very special welcome.
We have certificates to present.
Betsy, get that great photo.
Oh, we'll take the pictures. Yeah. Oh, yeah, we'll take this. We'll take these off. And William will take, William, will you? Oh, yes, the pins, thank you. See, I always forget this. Uh, as a gift, as a token of our appreciation, we have, uh, the city flower, the bird of paradise, uh, to give this visiting delegation. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much, and welcome to these fine representatives of Salvador. This time, I'd like to call on the president of the city council for a very, very special presentation. Call on Mr. Herb Wesson.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President and, and members. You know, this country was founded on the belief that people deserved second chances and second opportunities, and I'm here to present today, Terry, John, everybody. A group of, uh, individuals that worked with, uh, the LAUSD We Build program to create opportunities for individuals who were released from prison early. To give them an opportunity to do job training, to get their minds right, to understand what it takes to compete in order for the, so that they could change their lives around. In essence, the individuals behind me on this morning are responsible for giving second chances, and I'm very proud that two of the individuals I've worked with for, uh, several years, that's John Lieberman. Give John, where are you at? Raise your hand. Give him a round of applause. And Terry Gomes, who is definitely from my, my district, and they, they partnered with Terry's company, Trigely, uh... Trilogy Financial, uh, uh, Services. What they did, they worked with the Los Angeles Police Department to identify these, uh, inmates that would be released. They provided the funding and whatever was necessary to give them an opportunity to take advantage of their second chance. So what I would like to do is to present them with, uh, uh, certificates indicating how much we appreciate the work that you do. Everybody deserves a check, a second chance, and because of you, individuals from our community are being afforded that opportunity. So... Terry Go, I didn't know your name was Terrence. Terrence Go, Terry Gomes. And, uh... John Lieberman, who, who wears the coolest jackets. And to, uh, your employer, Trilogy Financial Services. Come on out, come on. Now, the big guy put on the side of me. But, uh, anyway, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, guys, for all that you do. And, Mr. President, if I could have, could one of you, uh, one of you speak representing the group? Terry, I guess you've been elected. Terry Gomes.
Wow, it sounds like we're at, it sounds like we're at a golf event. Anyway, um, I'd like to thank really, uh, LAPD, the City of Los Angeles, also my employers, uh, Jeff Motzky and Kevin McIntosh from Trilogy Financial Services. They were really the incubator for this program. We realized back, uh, two years ago that we were being, there was an influx of AB 109 felons coming into our community who had no job skills. They, they had no hope, uh, no chance to be able to enter back into our community. So what we did was we looked at some of the projects that were going on, from the Expo Line to LAX, to the Gold Line Extension, and then also the Purple Line. What we did was, we tried to find out how, with the contract that was being signed with these, with the MTA, they had 30% of the workers needed to be disadvantaged. That was, uh, prior felons. It was also people who were, uh, single parent families, and also the habitually homeless. And what we did was, we target, we targeted the felons to give them a step up and a second chance. With that, we were able to then get them into the We Build program through LAUSD, which was a great partner, along with the unions and along with LA City and LAPD, to be able to give them a second chance to move forward. Uh, out of the program, we just had 15 recent graduates. Uh, 10 of them are actively working in the construction field, and the three others, once they get their driver's licenses, uh, issues corrected, they'll be then working. So, again, Herb, I want to thank you for all the support. If it wasn't for your mentoring, uh, we wouldn't be, seriously, you've helped us as a neighborhood council, and then not only that, though, we've taken this program out to, uh, G, I mean, uh, Greater Echo Park Elysian, uh, Neighborhood Council. They're going to be doing an MOU. Also, Pico Union, which is part of the Promise Zone, is going to be signing an MOU with USC, Fight On, uh, to be able, to be able to, to be able to, uh, with their new project at Jefferson and Hoover, to be able to get the disadvantaged worker to be working on that project also. So again, thank you so much, council, and thank you again, Herb.
Good job, everybody. Herb, good job. Way to help out there. That's what we all do. Thank you. Mr. Wezar of the 14th District for a very special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, um, colleagues in public, I have some, uh, very special individuals here who are part of a great organization in Eagle Rock. It's known as the Women's 20th Century Club, and this year, we are celebrating 100 years of service to the Eagle Rock community and the greater northeast Los Angeles area. Since 1903, the Women's Club has been a beacon for progress, fighting for women's right to vote, advocating for Occidental College to admit female students, and serving as a central hub for the community's wartime effort. Today, you see, uh, many men and women active in the Women's Club, not only providing great community service, but also offering its site to host a number of community events and activities. It indeed is a central location for all of Eagle Rock to get together. The construction of the clubhouse began 100 years ago, and still today, it stands for progress, enlightenment, and empowerment. It's a gathering place for the Eagle Rock community and a wonderful piece of architecture that stands strong as part of our past and part of our future as we continue to celebrate it. It's been a good year for the Women's Club, heading up to the clubhouse's 100th anniversary, and I want to honor the entire team who worked together to achieve the National Register historical status for the structure and for, for its beautiful craftsman building this past year. That's quite an accomplishment, and I was pleased to support it throughout the process. So with that, I'd like to present to, uh, our wonderful group here, and, uh, present a resolution to Linda Johnstone Allen, the president of the Women's Club. A resolution from the city congratulating you on 100 years of service to our community. Congratulations.
Hello, everyone, and hello, Chairman. Um, I, I'd like to thank Councilman Wezar, he's been behind our efforts to revitalize this old building. Uh, it was built before we, Eagle Rock was even part of Los Angeles, and it was one of the three iconic buildings that were built at that time, the other being the Carnegie Library and the City Hall. And, um, in order for it to be used for generations, we need to do some overhaul, and, uh, and being part of, being a national landmark now, uh, having received that status this last summer, we are excited about being able to get some help to do that. The first of whom was our own councilman, who, who, who is helping us along with that. I'd like to, our longstanding member here, Doris Thielen, she's the, the longest standing youngest person I think I know. She's just amazing. Sure, her name is the amazing Doris Thielen, and, and my husband who always supports me, Karen Warren, our historian, Jessica McLean, Weddington McLean, has been, uh, remarkable, and she also does bringing back Broadway, and Lonnie Staff, former president. Eric Warren, who helped us get national status, he and his wife, and, uh, my good friend Martha Hidalgo, who's, who's really been a, a champion this year. So I just want to thank you so much for, for supporting our efforts to keep this landmark, um, vital for the community and for the City of Los Angeles.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you so much, and it's important to not only celebrate the structure, but as my good friend Tom LaBange would say, it's about the people who crossed through our beautiful buildings, but we must preserve our history as much as allowing those structures to be there for future generations, and allow these wonderful interactions that exist today to continue on for the future. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Juizar, thank you for your leadership on that and the preservation, and all our friends from Eagle Rock. Give them a good hand right there, and visit Eagle Rock the next time they got a shot at it. Thank you. Go Eagles. Now for a very special and heartfelt presentation, Nury Martinez, Councilwoman of the 6th District.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, colleagues. Prostitution, the prostitution problem in the San Fernando Valley is not a victimless crime. It is part of a much larger human trafficking epidemic in the United States. Today, I am proud to welcome members of the National Council of Jewish Women and the Coalition Against Sex Trafficking to highlight their work in raising awareness of SB 1193, the Human Trafficking Poster Implementation Project. Nearly 2.5 million are estimated to be victims... They are told that there is no one to help them, and they are treated often as criminals. To change this, last year, the legislature passed SB 1193 to help victims by requiring specific businesses to post notice information in public so that victims of human trafficking have telephone hotlines where they can seek help or report human trafficking activity. Members of the National Council of Jewish Women and CAST LA held an art contest to develop the model poster that would be distributed throughout LA County. Today, we stand to highlight the winning submission that the Coalition has been working on, and we're going to work really hard to make sure that we distribute it throughout LA County. I'm eager to see these posters throughout the city of Los Angeles and to let women and girls know that they're not alone and that it shouldn't be blamed. I'd like to introduce Maya Paley from the National Council of Jewish Women.
Hi, everyone. I'm Maya Paley, Director of Legislative and Community Engagement at the National Council of Jewish Women, Los Angeles. We are a grassroots advocacy organization that provides support as needed, direct services to 19,000 individuals in the area, and this is one of our projects. And I'm going to introduce our coalition partners.
Hi, my name is Melissa Odote, and I am a program manager at Oasis USA. Oasis is a community-based organization that works to strengthen and empower community members in our cities throughout the country, particularly on areas of human trafficking, to empower them to work with those who are victims as well as those who are vulnerable to human trafficking.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Richard. I'm the Policy and Legal Services Director at the Coalition to Abolish Slavery and Trafficking, otherwise known as CAST. We're one of the largest service providers in the country, directly serving victims of modern-day slavery here in the Los Angeles area, including shelter, case management, and legal services. And I wanted to take a minute to just tell you a little bit more about this very important piece of legislation. So this piece of legislation was championed by Senator Steinberg, and it was really conceived of by CAST Survivor Advisory Caucus, who really thought, what is it that survivors need to get out of their trafficking situation? And they said it was information. And so that's exactly what this poster does. It gives information to those in different businesses across LA County who are required to post this notice, as well as the survivors themselves. And if you look at the poster, you can see, under the law, it's mandated to be posted in Spanish and English, and then the third language of the most popular in the county, which is Chinese in LA County. The businesses that are required to post this notice include adult or sexually oriented businesses, primary airports, inner-city passenger rail, bus stations, truck stops, emergency rooms, urgent care centers, farm labor contractors, privately operated job recruitment centers, roadside rest areas, and business establishments that offer massage or bodywork. Although, we would encourage as many businesses as possible to publish this notice, the businesses targeted are those where we feel like trafficking might... Victims might be able to see the sign, or those observing a victim might be able to see the sign. Again, the number that's required to be posted is CAST Local 24-Hour Hotline, as well as the National Human Trafficking Resource Center hotline. And we're very proud to also thank the LA City Attorney's Office for being a leader in this area. Just last... Two weeks ago, they sent out a letter that gives notice to the businesses of this new law, so we're thankful for this partnership. And now Maya's going to talk a little bit more about the grassroots volunteers.
So we decided, as a coalition of six organizations, to try to get volunteers from the community to actually help implement this law, to help get these posters out there. So what we're doing is, we are putting on trainings, and we had our first one on the 9th of February at the National Council of Jewish Women. We had 100 people in the room from all over the city, and they are now broken up by ZIP Code into teams, and they're going door-to-door to the businesses that are required by law to put this up, and knocking on the door, and giving them a copy of the poster that we're actually funding the printing of for the entire county, and making sure that they put it up, and giving them the City Attorney's Letter as well, which many of them have received, but not all of them have gotten yet. And we are tracking it. Each person, when they go with their team, they have to track it through our online system, a registration form. Oh, sorry, out of time. Did I finish the...
Finish it.
Basically, we're going to compile all of this data and submit a report to the city so you can see how this is really raising awareness about human trafficking, and we know for a fact that this has worked in other states and has actually increased the number of calls to trafficking hotlines in Texas and Arkansas. So we are really excited that this is going to help reduce human trafficking in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And colleagues, we left a copy of the poster on your desk. Please help us spread the word and let your local businesses and your districts know as well. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Wait, Mr. LeBonde.
I just want to thank you for your leadership here and the group that you brought together today. In our districts of Hollywood, Mr. O'Farrell and I had then Mayor Garcetti. The impact of the challenge of this goes greatly, and the sadness to the individual who's used, in this case here, for street business, which is horrible. So I just want to thank you all, especially you, Nuri, because you've really brought this to the forefront again in front of the city council. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. LeBonde. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Now, we have a group of very special young people here today, the leaders of tomorrow, and I'd like to defer to Mr. Bond, and maybe you could introduce us to these fine young people.
Thank you, Mr. Weston. I'd like to acknowledge, sitting in the first few rows over here on my side of the chamber, the second graders from Kentwood Elementary School in Westchester. Thank you for being here today. There's a guy in the front row who's got a... Is that a skeleton costume? No, right there. Yeah, that's cool. Thank you for being here today. This is your city council. Hope you enjoy, and I hope Mr. LeBonde would be getting up in a heartbeat to tell you that you also need to go up to the very top of the building, in the tower, and see the very foggy, rainy Los Angeles that we have today. Thank you.
All right, let's give the kids a round of applause. Mr. LeBonde.
Let's give Mr. Weston a big hand for that nice introduction. He loves kids. So when I sat up there, we had a special guest come. He's the ambassador to the United States, representing Peru. Mr. Forsythe, come right next to me, right here in your whole delegation. Give him a big welcome right now. Also with him traveling is Cecilia Galarate, who is the Deputy Chief of Missions for Peru. And also with us today is the council general here in Los Angeles, Liliana, who's here as well. Would you say a few words for us?
It's a pleasure to be here, and as I have always said, the council is here to serve the Peruvian community and to work together with the Los Angeles Council.
Thank you, Mr. Ambassador.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. It's a great honor for me, as ambassador of Peru, to share the floor with you, with such distinguished council in this wonderful city of LA. My country, Peru, has had a long history of relations with California and with Los Angeles, and we truly hope to continue working in the future. We truly wish you all the best, sir.
Mr. Ambassador, we wish you the best, and it's want to know, take note, Los Angeles has over 101 concerts here, next to New York and Hong Kong. We have the most international operation of offices that we welcome, and especially the people of Peru, because you take care of the west coast of South America, which is so important. So, Mr. Forsythe, Mr. Ambassador, this is an official welcome from the President's City Council, the mayor, and myself. Here, here.
Thank you, sir.
And also, a little shout-out for Ms. Martinez, Commissioner for the Port of Los Angeles, who does such a great job. Thank you so much.
A big shout-out for Ms. Martinez.
And a constituent and a great attorney. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I think that brings us back to our agenda, correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so what I'd like to do is get out of the way as many of these items as I can quickly. So I'm going to go to item 16, John Walsh and Juan Akala. Please come forward.
Thank you. You just saved me from getting arrested for being enthusiastic in City Hall. I brought everybody, every one of you, a lollipop, because you should know how to suck.
You should stay on the item.
I did.
Thanks for showing all that respect to the young people that we have here today. Mr. Walsh?
This concerns State Proposition 84 Grants. We're all in favor of them, or half a million dollars. Unfortunately, the item doesn't explain the entire issue of the grants, but I don't have time to go into it. But you see that, before, there were close-ups. You don't see my face because I'm a Jew. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, we're going to now move to item 12. Mr. Akala called, special by Mr. Akala. And Ms. Martinez.
I wish to speak only one minute. Motion, Englander Fuentes, in resolutions relative to the applying for the state... What? You changed it. Current item number 12, motion, Martinez, O'Farrell... That's a lot longer. I didn't want to read so much. Requesting the Los Angeles Police Department and City Attorney Report on the strategies used to mitigate prostitution? I don't mind prostitution. Existing state and local laws which may be strengthened against prostitution? I love prostitution. The levels of coordination between the city, community, and social service organizations to combat prostitution? I don't think so. Some of the officers like to go out.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is a very serious issue, and for those of you who have been following the issue on prostitution in the city of Los Angeles, particularly in the San Fernando Valley, last October, I introduced a motion to specifically deal with two of the major prostitution corridors in the San Fernando Valley that happened to be in my district, on Van Nuys Boulevard, in Van Nuys, on Sepulveda Boulevard, and the second corridor is in Sun Valley, on Lancashim and San Fernando Road. You know, this is not only a quality-of-life issue, but I had the opportunity to ride along with VICE a couple of months ago, right as soon as I got elected, and the shocking thing that I noticed is the age of these young women. We're talking about 12, 13, 14-year-old girls that are having to stand on corners and sell their bodies. That is not okay. And so it's one of the reasons I had brought this motion forward and asked the LAPD and the City Attorney's Office to work with me on other solutions besides arresting our way out of this problem. That's not going to... That's not the way to go about it. We launched on Monday an initiative to deal with this issue on all sides, not only look at prosecuting the pimps to the fullest extent of the law, but also looking at diversion programs for young girls and women to try to leave this lifestyle and to try to rescue some of our youngest girls that are being victimized on the streets. We also want to make sure that we have diversion program to... Make sure that we make it known to the Johns that these two corridors are going to be heavily patrolled by LAPD, and that we're going to put a lot of resources into ensuring that women stop becoming victims. I have the deputy chief, George Villegas, here with me. Thank you very much, chief, for all your work, the men and women of the VICE unit that I had an opportunity to work with. And we also have someone from the City Attorney's Office, Richard Schmidt, who also has been instrumental in working with my office to deal with this issue. We have a very small presentation, mostly to deal with the initiative and how to help young women get resources to help them, and what we're doing to prosecute the pimps, and what we're doing to deter the Johns in the local community. So I want to thank both of you for your help and your leadership on this issue. Like I said, what's more alarming is the fact that these young girls are being brought from different parts of the country into Los Angeles for two or three days. They work, and then they move them again, and the age of these girls are becoming... It's becoming more and more younger, so it's a huge issue for us. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. It is a significant issue that we're trying to address, and we're thankful for the high-profile nature of how this is being looked at, so that we can not only address the enforcement piece, but also the prosecution piece from the City Attorney's and the District Attorney's Office, as well as the community aspect of it, having a collaborative approach with the community action impact teams, as well as working with Interventionist, the Mary Magdalene Project, and other services, so that we can provide a wraparound opportunity to not necessarily treat the victims of prostitution as suspects, but rather as victims, to the extent that we possibly can. Our focus in the San Fernando Valley will be the pimps and the Johns, as they're known, so that we can try and remove the opportunity for those victims to be continuously victimized in terms of the prostitution.
Thank you. As councilperson Martinez indicated, this is not a problem that is... You can arrest your way out of. For decades, we have applied traditional law enforcement and prosecutorial efforts toward combating prostitution in these major corridors, and while we have racked up impressive numbers of convictions, that has not made the problem go away. The City Attorney has committed to a new approach in partnership with this council, in partnership with LAPD and the District Attorney's Office. One of the principal things that we are doing is we are expanding to the valley and to the rest of the city, a pilot diversion program, which has been going on in the central area for some time, which would allow both Johns and the women who have been arrested to, once they have entered pleas to those charges, to be referred to programs that are designed to curb that future behavior. We're especially excited about the prospects of being able to have the women who are brought in go to Mary Magdalene Project in the valley and Watts Health here in Los Angeles to get training, make contacts, and get some assistance in trying to get out of the life. We look forward to being able to report back on the progress here. We are also, along with LAPD, focusing on the human trafficking aspect of this, the idea that the women out here are more often victims than anything else, and will be working to increase the number of prosecutions for pimps, either for misdemeanor supervising a prostitute, or in cooperation with the District Attorney's Office for felony pimping and pandering.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I see no questions on the cue. Let's prepare to... What, do we want to note and file this? Okay, then, without objection, that'll be the order. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Let's... Wait, let me look for... We're going to go to item 13? Mr. Weezer, item 13, and I want to make sure that... Mr. Weezer, item 13, and I want to make sure that Mr. Coretz and Mr. Bonin are in the queue right after you. So if you would proceed and if we could have quiet.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. This is an item introduced by Councilmember Coretz and Mr. Bonin, which was heard in our Planning Land Use and Management Committee this past Tuesday. We had a number of people come up and speak to this item and public comment which shows the great interest on this matter. I want to thank my colleagues who've introduced motions on this to address, which is something that should concern us all, whether or not we live near some of the sites where the fracking is being conducted. So quite quickly, the motion calls for the City Planning Department and the City Attorney to further review and develop regulatory controls over fracking in the City of Los Angeles. It requests the City Attorney, with the assistance of the Planning Department and other departments, to prepare and present an ordinance to change the zoning code to prohibit all activity associated with the well simulation, including hydraulic fracturing, gravel packing, and oxidizing or any combination thereof of those activities. So I will now turn the floor over to Mr. Coretz, who will now speak on this motion. And I want to thank everyone who came out to the committee. There were over 100 speakers who came out that day to speak on this item. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would think you'd want us to move on this quickly, so allow me to try to get this plane landed. I do want to give a special thanks to Mr. Weezer for hearing this so quickly in your committee. The people of the City of Los Angeles truly appreciate that. I want to thank Mr. Fuentes for waiving this out of his committee so that we could hear it today. So personally, I thank you all very much. And again, Mr. Parks, we will take care of, we will schedule your issue as quickly as possible. With that said, Mr. Coretz, the floor belongs to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, for hearing this item today and for all your leadership on this issue. I appreciate also my colleagues, Mr. Weezer, my co-author, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Parks, and your staff for all your hard work on this. And before I start, so people won't have to applaud after every speaker, but so we know how strong the support is here, I wonder if everybody could stand up who's here in support of...
Everyone rise. Mr. Coretz, treasure that ovation, okay? I hope somebody recorded it for you.
Well, colleagues, I think we all can agree that unregulated fracking is crazy. And there's a number of reasons. We all know, first, and one of the ones that concerns me the most, is the danger of earthquakes. Fracking-related earthquakes are taking place all over the country in states that normally don't have earthquakes. It's confirmed by geological experts of great prominence across the country. And so, of course, what are we doing? We're bringing something that causes earthquakes where they don't happen to one of the most earthquake-prone places on the face of the earth. That doesn't make sense. We're also turning millions and millions of gallons of water into, and clean water, into toxic waste. It wouldn't make sense, in the middle of this drought, just wasting that amount of water is a bad idea. But turning that into permanently toxic water is absolute insanity. We're seeing it up close in our neighborhoods, where people are getting sick near wells, getting nosebleeds, getting headaches, getting other symptoms. Their homes are cracking. It doesn't make sense to continue that. And we're allowing this in places where people are already sick, like Cedar Sinai, where there's a well right across the street, which my constituents are very concerned about, and I am as well. We're using hundreds of toxic chemicals that we're not even allowed to know about and creating a chemical soup of tremendous danger. It's time to stop this crazy practice, stop the insanity, protect our health and safety. This is so intuitive, it makes so much sense, that we're following Dallas. Dallas, a city based on oil drilling and their economy, and they've already regulated fracking. It's time we do the same. Thank you, colleagues. Let's take this historic step here today.
Thank you, Mr. Coretz. Mr. Bonin to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Coretz, and thank you for everybody who's here. In particular, thanks to a lot of the folks who did some grassroots organizing on this Food and Water Watch, the Sierra Club, Physicians for Social Responsibility, and so many of our colleagues, Mr. West and Mr. Parks, Mr. Blumenfield, who have stood up and said that this is an important thing to do. Let me frame this very quickly. This is about neighborhood safety. This is about public health. This is about environmental justice. And this is, quite frankly and very plainly, about common sense. Let's take the term fracking for just a second. It refers to hydraulic fracturing. Fracturing of the earth, breaking up and shattering the earth in an area riddled with earthquake faults. It is, as I have said repeatedly, energy production by Dr. Strangelove. This does not meet any test of common sense or public safety. This is a technology that is experimental, that is wildly, or wildly unregulated by the state, and it is absolutely essential for us to step in and say no to this in our neighborhoods and make sure we do everything to protect the people who live and work and play here in the City of Los Angeles. Mr. Coretz mentioned the various different threats. Contamination of our groundwater, the waste of water in the middle of a drought, chemical smells being sensed in neighborhoods in South Los Angeles. Something is very wrong here. And earthquakes in places that do not have a history of earthquakes. They're not having an occasional little shake. They're having swarms of earthquakes, hundreds of earthquakes in Oklahoma just in the first couple of months of this year since they started fracking. This is wrong. We cannot allow this to happen. It is very important that the City of Los Angeles continue its tradition of leadership and standing up and saying, "We, as the largest city in Los Angeles, do not believe that this is safe and we want a moratorium on this until it can be regulated, until its safety can be proven." Again, neighborhood safety, public health, common sense, and environmental justice. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I want to thank all of the community that came out today. I want to thank Pastor Saws from my district members. We have satisfied public hearing when we were in the committee. So let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That passes. Congratulations for all of your hard work, okay? Congratulations. All right. I believe, Ms. Martinez, you requested we reconsider item 12, correct? Item 12, you want us to reconsider? Yes, yes, I'm hearing. That we want to vote on it. So on item 12, let's... We're voting on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Now we're actually voting on the item? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that passes. Mr. Coretz? Or is that just excitement that made you push your button again?
I did not press anything.
We might have some technical issues, so if we could get GSD to look into what's going on. Let's go to item 15. Mr. Walsh and Mr. Akala on item 15. Again, thank you all for coming.
Item 15. Fracking off is like jacking off. We don't like it. Public hearing has not been held. This is the reap. As I always say when I get up here, if you have any code violations in your home, write them out, give them to your landlord. If the landlord doesn't act upon it, you go to the city and the city stops. You don't have to pay your rent to the landlord anymore. You pay it to the city until he repairs your home. HollywoodHighlands.org, fracking off is jacking off.
Mr. Akala.
I feel as though we're all just fracking around.
Let's stay on the issue.
Yeah. Well, I personally think that the city should tell the landlords, fix it up, baby. And if they don't fix it, take measures so they do. But I extend this even further by saying, we should all have a place to live without a landlord. Because all these landlordship issues could be ended if we all had a place to live without a landlord. Read my book, The United World of Free and Clear. We finally stopped being stupid and we don't have any of these issues like rent escrow. Rent escrow. Why do we have rent escrow? Because we have landlords. If we had no landlords, we wouldn't have no rent escrow. Why do we have landlord tenant... You know, some landlords get killed by the tenants. And some tenants get killed by the landlords. So to me, this is a good issue. You know, you should collect from the landlord and make him fix it. But go even beyond that. If you're a progressive city, make it so everybody can have a place to live without a damn landlord.
Okay, let's prepare to... Oh, wait, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, already. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And item 14 forthwith. Let's go to item 17. Mr. Walsh. And Mr. Herman.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential and tweeting at Hollywood Dems with a capital H. This concerns one of my favorite council districts, Council District 9. And what this does to Council District 9, this is Mr. Price's district. We congratulate you on winning your election a few months ago. And this concerns money that will be spent for community support programs in Council District 9. It's $140,000. It should be even more because this is a council district that has been traditionally neglected by the city. Now that we have Mr. Price in there, I think things will change. This is HollywoodHighlands.org. All the white people are gone.
Mr. Herman.
Motion by Mr. Price. And by the way, everyone in Los Angeles, good morning and hello as we begin. No rain is gonna stop me from coming to visit all of you. But, Mr. Price, good job for once. $140,000 in your District 9 for a special event fee. Subsidy line item. But once again, everyone in Los Angeles, once again, we defeated the CRA and now we're gonna do something even greater. I'm gonna get off the topic of fracking because fracking's over. Yes, all the Caucasians are left.
On the subject.
And back onto subject, matter of importance is this. Will San Antonio Department of Transportation to make any changes and clarifications or corrections to the above funds of a transfer instructions as may be necessary and implement in the intent of this motion? Well, a lot of jargon. Let's get to the point. Transportation's funds strictly by law will stay for transportation only. And as my time runs out, and sadly to say that most of my councilmen who are not sitting in their seats...
Mr. President, he is not talking about this.
Stay on the item, Mr. Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I'll go back to the subject. Transfer appropriate the use of $140,000 for Council District 9 as follows: $100,000 to the General City Purpose Fund. Community service, additional community service and programs in Council District 9 for an additional $40,000. Great. We spend money like it rains.
Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, we'll go to item 18. Mr. Walsh. And Herman, Mr. Herman. 18, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Of course, this is one of my obsessive subjects. Another reward for a fatal hit-and-run. Coretz keeps saying, "Oh, we catch everybody in the West Side." Yeah, he's talking about one hit-and-run of a white person at Century City, which you caught right away. Most people who are hit-and-run are minorities. All I am asking is that you have a report. How many outstanding rewards are there? How many have you cost? And they won't do it because the quisling blacks on this agency, who are really white men, Ku Klux Klan in disguise, won't ask for it. And they take all this heat from me because they're paid by the white man. Well, this is white skin. I want to know how many people have been killed and how much HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Mr. Dude, please sit down.
Thank you for my time. Los Angeles, convenience, convenience. Is it really a public necessity to have hit-and-runs anywhere in the City of Los Angeles? I wear my shades so not to expose the real problem here of hit-and-runs. Hit-and-run collisions are similar to the issue that Mr. Weezer got himself involved in, in his hit-and-run in Boyle Heights. It's a fact. He got in an accident in a city car in Boyle Heights. That's a statement and a... That's a statement and a fact. Now, let me get back to topic here. For $50,000, we wish to award anyone who finds, exposes, and points out the perpetrators of a hit-and-run. But again, public necessity and convenience of issuing permits for medical marijuana dispensaries and even best...
Stay on the subject.
It all comes back to a hit-and-run because normally, Mr. Speaker, when AB bills are legislation that goes for public safety, which Mr., um... He's not even here. Mr. Englander is very well aware of. Public safety, right? That we protect every, all, and anyone in the city of Los Angeles when it comes to hit-and-runs. Because as a result, if we do not, we are only hurting all of you who believe, who really believe that you're safe in the city of Los Angeles from a hit-and-run. So when you come and ride your bike, walk the streets, don't forget, thank our council members for our public safety.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
All right, let's go to item 1 then. I think it's, uh, Mr. Malik, Parag Malik, Alexandra Montgomery, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Parks, I'm sorry, I didn't see your name.
I just want to say, we have a speaker here, but on item 1A, we're willing to do a two-week extension so he can work with Building Safety, but he must bring in his documentation papers.
Okay, so then that's what we will do on, um, item 1A. That brings us to what date, Madam Clerk?
Due to the recess, that's March 18th.
Okay, so, sir, after, or that'll bring us to March 18th. Ms. Montgomery? David Darwish? Yes, please identify yourself.
Alexandra Montgomery.
Welcome.
Good morning. We were here 30 days ago, objecting to an imposition of a fine levied by the Building and Safety. I gave my spiel 30 days ago. At that time, the Building and Safety did not have a representative here who had complete information. So they wanted to continue it for 30 days. It's been continued. And it's my understanding there's been no movement, no new information that Building and Safety has provided regarding the imposition of this fine. The fine was levied. We believe in error. There was a final inspection done by a Mr. Utreras, who was the inspector assigned at the time. He had a conversation with Mr. Montgomery regarding the grievances that were alleged in the actual initial notice. The inspector reviewed the property at that time. He joked with Mr. Montgomery about how to keep the graffiti off of the building, indicating that he should buy a bucket of paint and set it by the door.
And what's your address again? We're looking for it in our file. Or the address of the property?
The 8514 South Avalon Boulevard in Los Angeles. And we would request that they dismiss the fine. Mr. Montgomery is here and he can testify that he had a conversation.
I will tell you what I will do. The representative from Council District 9 is not here. So I will give you a two-week continuance would put us where, Madam Clerk?
To March 18th.
Okay, so what I am recommending that you do is contact Council District 9.
She did. Mrs. Montgomery did.
Let's do it. Let's do it. I've given you two weeks. Let's discuss it with them and see if we can come up with a different outcome. Okay, so on that item, again, Madam Clerk, will be continued for two weeks. David?
If I could clarify...
But there's no way I could vote on that if I don't have the member here.
I'm just clarifying what action you want us to take in two weeks, within the two weeks.
What's gonna happen, there are no action will be taken today.
Okay.
This will be delayed for two weeks in order to give you enough time to re-communicate with the 9th District. Could you please quit applauding? It disrupts the conversation here. So we're gonna wait until the return of the council member from that district. I'm asking you to contact them. I will get a message to them and hopefully in two weeks, we can work something out. If not, before we vote one way or the other, I'd like to have the representative here from your district to guide this council. So, you have a two-week continuance? Okay, now, we have representatives from Council District 9 that are on their way downstairs to talk to you now. So if you'd sit in the corner over there when they get here, we will, uh, tell them where you are, okay? Mr. Akala, does he have time? No, he has no more time left. Carlos Vera?
Hi, good morning.
Yes, sir.
This is David Darwish and I'm for Woodley, 7324 Woodley Avenue. We have been cited four years ago and decided wrong property. We have chain link professionally done surrounding property. There's no way you can do graffiti. The neighbor had a wood fence against our fence. He got the graffiti and we have been cited. I have been here before you delay it. I called the council lady, Mary Martinez. I called her office and no help. I talked to the inspector. He said the case is closed. I don't care. And I think you shouldn't hold us hostage. That should be removed of the property. You know, you stressing me out coming here every week, every month. It's not right. It's not fair. And I'd like you to remove it and give me a writing, in writing that you're gonna remove it.
Okay, so if I could have, uh, Mr. Carlos Vera, please come forward. They're discussing your issue on the sides, Mr. Darwish. Carlos Vera?
Yes, sir.
No, no, no.
I'm coming back here.
Just please have a seat. Carlos Vera, Mr. Herman.
A man of justice returns for all of you Angelinos to understand the viable extortion of Building and Safety for nuisance abatement costs, non-compliance of code violations. This is continuous. This poor gentleman's telling you that all you went out there for, a neighbor issue, and instead you infract upon his rights. This is extortion at the most extreme widespread discrimination when you place extortion of liens on people's properties. People today cannot afford to pay for these liens. And justice is the word I seek in having you put a hold, oppose these aggressive liens against people and their properties. Yes, you can put Building and Safety to the side here and talk about it. That's fine. And talk about it over here to the people. But remember, Mr. David said, Ms. Nuri Martinez, why these expensive charges of a lien on his property? This is it, Los Angeles, a good example of your violations of your First Amendment Rights.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so what we're gonna do for now, could we hold item 1? I think it's 1C. Let's just hold it for a moment and let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay. Now, that brings us to item 2. I have, uh, some public comment cards on item 2. Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh passes on item 2. Mr. Akala's out of time? Okay, so Mr. Akala's out of time. So let's prepare to... Where's Mr... There's Mr. O'Farrell. No, no, no. Please go to your seat. If you don't, Mr. Labange will be... No, please. I know you've been very good, but I don't want to create an opening. Yes, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to just say publicly, it takes a lot for me to approve this kind of change as well, but we're talking about an operator that has been in business since 2000, the year 2000. So they have a 14-year record as a live music venue, providing performance space for Grammy-winning recording artists and live acts that are quality in Hollywood. So 14 years of demonstrated good behavior with zero complaints from a public safety or a complaint perspective really satisfies my own personal requirement to approve this type of change from a 47 to a 48. And my threshold for approving something like this is very, very high because of the proliferation of these types of licenses in Hollywood. But this case in particular, this venue, the Hotel Cafe, are one of the really good operators. So I urge an "I" vote to make this exception. Thank you.
And I will second that, uh, motion if there's a need. Let's prepare to vote. Let's, uh, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate that, the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, that is, that passes. Let's, uh, I guess we will recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting. So, Madam Clerk?
Blooming Philbona, Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Caressca, Coria, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Weston, 10 members present in court, Mr. President.
Okay, we have one card on this that's, uh... We have one card.
Budget and Finance Committee report, the ordinance of first consideration. Mr. Speaker, are we establishing accounts within the reserve fund and establishing a new budget stabilization fund? Again, all this speaking is just a distraction, but it's fine. The accompanying ordinance amending the Los Angeles Administrative Code regarding the Reserve Fund and adding a new article. Is this an amendment? We don't know. Los Angeles Administrative Code regarding a budget stabilization fund. We can't even hold up the ceiling, let alone finance a budget. Thank you. Continue. The city attorney to prepare and present amended ordinance to council to incorporate charges and discuss the Budget and Finance Committee that reflect in more detail and budget stabilization. This sounds very hocus-pocus to me. And to all of you in Los Angeles, does it sound pretty awkward? To me, it does because I represent the public. I represent public interests. And, Mr. Speaker, public interest is not to defraud a system that works for everyone. We are not part of the status quo here. Again, we are not part of the status quo. So in identifying...
He is not talking about this item.
Stabilization fund policy, I'm against it until there's a report. Systematic reporting is the only way to do checks and balance with the budget. If you would agree, don't stand up now, but think about it. Stabilization for Budget and Finance Committee report, we need an audit. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I understand there's a substitute for this issue, so I will make the motion for that, seconded by Mr. Labange. Thank you, Tom.
And, Mr. President, council should take two votes, first to the question of whether to substitute and the second on the actual item.
Okay, so let's take the first vote where it relates to the substitution. Let's open the roll.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Just for the record, this is... This is the ordinance dated February 27, 2014.
Okay, so let's vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Now, let's move forward with the second vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
And, Mr. President, that ordinance will be held over for one week.
I understand.
And due to the recess, that's March 18th.
Okay. Now, Mr. Parks?
I hate to respond when some of the people speak, but one of the things I think this importance of the public's not mislay it, on this item that we just voted on, it's actually implementing a charter change that the public voted on. So it's not something we just did on our own. It is something in which the public voted on a charter change and this implements the new charter change.
Trust me, sometimes it's just hard.
Yes.
It's just hard to sit there, so I understand. So are there any other items in this special meeting?
No, Mr. President.
Then we should adjourn it?
Yes.
And move, return to the regular meeting? Now, we still have, uh... Okay, we'll start with some of our general public comment cards. We'll start with Michael Waterman and Dr. Williams. Please come forward.
Um, how many of you have heard of Moral Mondays in North Carolina? Well, here in California, we are so blessed not to be saddled with a buttload of radical Republicans who want to privatize everything they touch, disenfranchise voters, and sell off the commons at every turn. It would be like having a state legislature full of Paul Ryan, Scott Walkers, and Daryl Isis. Here's a song that comes from Moral Mondays in North Carolina. "It Gives Me Goose Flesh." I hope you like it. You can sell off the office, you can buy yourself an office in the Capitol. Enjoy it while you can. You can auction our clean water to the frackers, but you know, you will need water too. You can wish your way back to the days of old Jim Crow, but we won't follow you. We are not for sale. We are not for sale. If you think you can silence us, you'll need a bigger jail. Because we are not for sale. You can, you can buy yourself a mansion down on Granville Avenue. Try and buy a university. You can buy yourself a navy, but you can't turn back the tide because you don't own me. We are not for sale. We are not for sale. If you think that you can silence us, you'll need a bigger jail. Because we are not for sale. 14 seconds left. Woo! I picked this, um... Oh, we had a big demonstration a few Saturdays ago about justice for Kelly Thomas and it was a big turnout, even though it's an Orange County issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr., uh, no, I'm sorry, Dr. Tom Williams, please come forward, followed by, uh, Mr. Walsh and Juan Akala.
Dr. Tom Williams, Sierra Club Fracking Oil and Gas Committee. Thank you all for passing the resolution. Some of us do know that'll take much more than just passing the resolution. Some of us do know that it'll take much more than just passing the resolution. City Attorney, I hope you start preparing the ordinance for the moratorium. When? 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 We need to have a moratorium ordinance passed within the month of March. Let's set it the end of March. Uh, elsewise, what was the meaning of this entire presentation today regarding item thirteen? We're ready to help. You get the moratorium ordinance in place, and we'll bring out a lot of people to help. We also know that the Article Four, Section thirteen oh one, is the real issue. That is revision of the municipal... L.A. Municipal Code for Oil and Gas Operations and Drilling in the City of Los Angeles. Why? Because many of the oil companies are not good neighbors. They don't tell people what's going on. They don't really want to even deal with the neighbors. Last night, we had a guy that said, "Oh, well, the odor that the lady smelled wasn't all that bad, and it was only twenty thousand parts per million as measured by AQMD, and that's sixty percent below the limit." His limit was when it explodes. Fifty thousand parts per million is the lower explosive limit of gases being emitted from the Murphy site. Twenty thousand is twice the limit for the major leaks, as established by AQMD.
Thank you, uh, Doctor Williams. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential. Okay. All the white people are gone, but I want you to know there will be a fracking demonstration in Sacramento, two weeks from tomorrow. That's March fifteenth on the Mall at, uh, one P.M. If they're all... This is a cultural thing for us. We white people, we're not talking to the minorities. You're not interested in fracking. You shouldn't be, because you don't have the time to be interested in fracking. HollywoodHighlands.org. Come to our website. We just ran out from AP concerning the LAX bloodbath. The reason that the Central American TSA agent bled to death was that your phones from the L... From the police... Not the LAPD, but the airport police didn't work. The phones didn't work. I have the AP story on my, uh, on my website. The blood of the Central American is on your hands, especially the Mexican-Americans who don't give a damn about Central Americans. Incidentally, I, I want to know what the rules are on a disruption. You allowed these white anti-frackers to stand up and applaud for three minutes, and, uh, the African-American running this meeting, "That's okay, white man, but when a brown man, Mr. Herman, way back here in Row Eleven, goes like this, it's shut up, or I'll throw you out." This is called... Mr. Herman committed a crime known as applauding while brown. You're not allowed to do this, because, remember, a lot of the brown racism comes from black skin. But then again, remember, the people with black skin and all you up here are victims, as Malcolm X would say, handkerchief heads, and those who support Uncle Tom's are victims of white racism. You are all victims of white racism. And remember, all I'm doing is repeating Malcolm X. HollywoodHighlands.org. And remember what happened to him.
Okay, Mr. Akala.
Remember what happened to Kelly Thomas? And, uh, I have a facsimile of Mr. Coretts. Uh...
Looks a lot like you.
Anyway, uh, yeah, uh, all this fracking going on makes people sick. You know what? The homeless get sick every day, and you don't mention a damn thing about the homeless getting sick. You know, we had a tuberculosis in, uh, Skid Row. Do you know that tuberculosis should only be a third-world country disease? What's going on with your beautiful city of Los Angeles, full of tuberculosis? Oh, but you worry about all the, all the health issues from fracking. Well, I don't agree with fracking either. I don't want... Agree with screwing the environment in any way. I don't think you should be pouring cement all over the city and creating a Guinness World Book of Records, 'cause you pour the most cement in the world. What a bunch of idiots. Isn't that messing up the environment too? Putting all these skyscrapers? Or pigeons should only live, not human beings? You know what? I hope those frackers win over you and destroy the city of L.A. so we can start over with a city that's level, not skyscrapers, because you get a lot of payoffs from the developers. You are a damn dirty city. You are a bunch of frackers.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, we'll get right back to the last few cards on general public comment, but I want to, uh... Madam Clerk, we want to go back and deal with item... What was it? One C?
Uh, for item one B, uh, there's a request to continue that item to March twenty-eighth instead of March eighteen.
Okay, and that's because of a court situation or what have you, so without objection, where it relates to one B, that's what we'll do. Ms. Martinez?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask that, uh, item one C, that, uh, we approve the lien, but that we waive the late fees on the collection associated with the lien.
Okay, I'll second that.
Thank you.
So, let's prepare to vote on that. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, that brings us back to, uh, general public comment. Correct. Fourth with on the previous item. So, Brian Barajas, Jason Ackerman. Followed by Mr. Herman.
Okay. Now, throughout this whole week, the LaRouche PAC organization has been impeaching, at least pushing it, of so-called Barack Obama. Now, one of the fears that, um, I have for this city in particular is the need... The actual Nazism that's going on in Ukraine will be coming here. Now, if that happens, you have to understand... In a, in a collapse like what we're going through, people lose it. George Soros will fund Nazism in the United States and has, as he's, he's actually been doing around the world, in Ukraine. Articles like Timothy Snyder, who, on the New York Review, titled Fascism, Ukraine and Russia, he makes the point that the Americans should adopt what's going on in Ukraine, that is adopt fascism, mob rules. Now, in the bathroom stall in this building, on this floor, if you look at the stall when you come in a second, there's the... There's a Hell Hitler eighty-eight. It's in the restroom right now. And so, we have to organize ourselves in removing and putting in, into office, a president, because what I could tell you, the disintegration in Ukraine will force Russia to go with thermonuclear World War III. And the American people have to impeach, because it is in their authority to protect the interests of not only ourselves, not only this country, but everything in this planet. And we have to move beyond the stars.
Okay, Mr. Ackerman? Well, Mr. Herman, you're here. You can come. Mr. Herm... Okay. Mr. Herman. Mr. Ackerman, you're next.
We, the people, are at a war. And the war is about corruption in the city of Los Angeles, the second-largest city in the world. And we are involved with a crisis. The crisis to interrupt the lives of all our constituents for the war of corruption is a view of bribery and extortion. This crisis must come to a stop, and I ask for the city attorney and the attorney general to become more involved with the FBI to investigate our complaints now. People are homeless. For what reason? Corruption. Again, Caucasians come in here and can applaud. But another person like myself or Batman would say, "It's widespread discrimination." And on the streets of Arcadia, right down from Hall of Justice, off the Hollywood freeway, homeless encampment. For what reason? When we have the resources to put these people off the streets in a home? So, I developed a song today for its purpose. "I want to know, I want to know, have you ever seen the rain?" "I want you to know, I want you to know, Mr. Labange, that corruption is in L.A., but don't blame it on the rain. Don't blame it on the rain. Before the calm comes the storm. I want you to know, if you ever seen the rain, come to L.A. We're the party capital of L.A. Hey, hey!"
All right. Uh, Mr. Alexander? Or A- Ackerman? Jason Ackerman? Please come forward.
Hey, you, Council President and Council. Um, so, my name's Jason Ackerman. I'm on the senior neighbor council, not here in that capacity today. But I am here as a resident of the San Fernando Valley and a constituent of Paul Coretts, and I just want to commend Paul Coretts and his staff, chiefly Andy Schrader, for their work on banning fracking in the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank all of you for voting for this effort. Uh, we had a packed house today, and I think if we had video conferencing in Van Nuys, we'd have packed that house, too. We are forty percent of the population, and we do not get an adequate share of time, uh, for your attention in the Van Nuys City Hall, and I'd like to see that rectified. We used to be at once a month. We're currently at twice a month. Can we at least bring it back to once a month? Also, I would appreciate it if the city would put some, uh, pressure on Time Warner Cable and all the major cable providers to restore analog signals for Channel thirty-five, because it currently is not available. If you do not have a digital converter box or you do not have digital cable, you get snow when you want to watch City View. So, for a channel with such low viewership already, one would think that there would be a more concerted effort to restore, um, uh, video there. Um, the next... So, I'm glad we've taken a stance against fracking. The next step, step, is to wean ourselves off natural gas, and we need to do that with our buses. We are currently operating the largest natural gas fleet in the country, and if we're going to take a stand against fracking and, and, uh, natural gas and its environmental impacts, then we need to follow through with our transportation system and start building more electric buses... Get more electric buses and get light rail in the San Fernando Valley where everyone has to commute to L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us, uh... In fact, Mr. Coretts, you just missed a, uh, pat on the back. Anyway, with that said, uh, Madam Clerk, what, uh, is before this body? Yes, Mr. Coretts? You would... No, you've had a good day. You and Mr. Bonney. Uh, Mr... Madam Clerk, what is before this body?
Council has motions for post and referral.
Okay, now, it's my understanding we're trying to put a, uh, a motion in. So, Mr. Labange, I'd like to, uh, defer to you. Maybe you can, uh, inform the city as to things that are going on.
Well, Mr. President, I just wanted to say that I got an email today from, uh, that is a copy to me, from a Mr. Llewellyn, who sent it to the Los Angeles City Finance Department, and he just completed his online L.A. Business Tax Renewal Form and got to say it went nearly perfect. Uh, he was very impressed with the experience, as easy it could be. Uh, I was up at City Hall in Hollywood, and there was a very long queue of people who were there in the Office of Finance paying things. Further, in his email, it says, "As a former newspaper reporter who went to work on statewide government, I am aware of the unhappy constituents who are quick to send nasty emails, but satisfied residents usually stay silent." So, he wanted to make us all aware of the point that a good job for our Office of Finance in the city of Los Angeles, and especially our field offices, when there are collections notices made. If he tried online, as he did, the renewed order the past couple of years, it just didn't work quite right. But this time, it was smooth sailing, and he wanted to thank those who were involved and put this together. Perhaps, uh, he could help... He wanted to share with other departments in government. So, he cc'd other council members to make them aware of the fine work of the Office of Finance. And furthermore, uh, so this is thank you to the Department of Finance for their work, especially now with some of the due dates. In addition to that, uh, yesterday, at our Griffith Park Resource Board meeting, where the city attorney's representative was not present, he was, uh, here working in council on issues, uh, of matters of greater extent, uh, there were several matters talked about as far as the agenda that is coming forth, including something that's going to be considered by both the Board of, uh, of Recreation of Parks Commission. One is a stage at the Old Zoo, uh, for the Shakespeare Festival and Symphony of the Glen, which is a local, uh, symphony orchestra by Arthur Rubenstein. And then also, there is a, uh, proposal for two ballfields in the Crystal Springs area for youth there. They will both be considered either sometime in March or in May. And it's very important, because these are some of the objectives that I have, because as, uh, as you know, there's a certain term that you have to fulfill as a council member. My term does come the thirtieth of June, two thousand fifteen. So, those are big things. Also, working to plant the original Sherman Oak, in Sherman Oaks, as well as, uh, get the Sherman Oaks Van Nuys soccer complex together, uh, with new artificial turf. And we thank Mike Shoal for the excellent job that he's doing at Recreation of Parks as we continue to try to push these things along and get them done. I also have a local initiative, Mr. Wesson, on, uh, our civic centers, our city halls in the regions, to be able to provide better constituent services. And lastly, I do want to thank all the sanitation workers who are cleaning the drains, uh, throughout Los Angeles with the storm that has come through. It has hit us pretty good, and many drains have been backed up and clogged. I will be coming with an initiative, Mr. President, to try to push our street cleaning operation in with sanitation, so we can have cleaner streets and cleaner drains as we try to keep the rivers clear and the oceans clear as we go on. So, Mr. President, if there's any more questions, I'll be having to answer it. If you need me to call anybody to the center table for testimony, whatever you need. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Mr. Labange, any more special announcements? Seeing none? Why don't we, uh, all rise? Everyone in the building? Yes, Mr. O'Farrell?
Mr. President, my, my apologies. I just wanted to have, uh, just make one general announcement.
Go right ahead.
And that is, uh, the Academy Awards is this Sunday, the Oscars, and I just wanted to, to give a shout out, uh, to the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences. The Academy Awards is held in Hollywood every year, and, uh, I want the public to know that it generates sixty-seven million dollars in the local economy of economic activity. So, let's have a, a great Academy Awards. Enjoy the show, and may the best, uh, may the best contestant win.
Thank you, uh, Mr. O-, uh, Labange?
Mr. O'Farrell, thank you for the good work. I know our offices are working together, but especially thank the Department of Transportation that is coordinating the efforts there and the Los Angeles Police Department, Hollywood area, and other support from the Police Department, Fire, for this very major event and, uh, especially on Highland Avenue, which will be closed. Hollywood Boulevard is closed, but Mitch, you and your staff are doing a great job. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Englander.
Today, uh, and well, yesterday, but today, uh, both days are very special days. In my household, yesterday, my, uh, first born turned eighteen. She's now eighteen, and, uh...
Congrats.
So, I, I left her a voter registration card on the breakfast table, appropriately, yesterday, and today is the, the twenty-sixth birthday that, for my wife, that we've shared together since we've been together. Not revealing her age, but, uh, today is, I wish my wife a very happy birthday.
Congratulations.
But I'm here with all of you, but I'll be taking her out for dinner.
You had, you had better. Okay. Okay, at a minimum. Okay, I'm looking to the Mr. Coretts' side. Mr. Parks, you have an adjourning motion?
Yes. Thank you very much. I'd like to ask us to adjourn in memory of John Harden Williams, who was born February 1943, passed away in February 2014. He's affectionately known as Big John, or JJ. He was the fourth of five children born to Charles and Helena Williams in New Orleans, Louisiana. At the ages of three, they moved to Los Angeles, where he attended local schools and graduated from Darcy High School in the class of 61. He also attended L.A. City College and transferred to UCLA, where he majored in Theater Arts. At UCLA, he was an active member of the Musical Comedy Workshop. He was a natural athlete, participated in weightlifting, bodybuilding competitions at Venice Beach. He also played fullback for the Los Angeles Mustang, a semi-pro football team. He continued his interest in performing arts, singing, dancing, and acting on a small theater stage, clubs, and television. Some credits are Guys and Dolls, 12 Angry Men, and most notably, The A-Team. Always a hard worker. His first job was at nine years old throwing newspapers in Baldwin Hills. As a teenager, he worked with his aunt's store and cleaned offices at night with his father. He had 25-year career as a teamster, and last worked for Universal Studios as a team driver. Retired in 2012. He has two children, Lavina and DeeDee, with Floretta Butler. Later, he remarried Virginia Harris, and had one daughter, Joy, who's a former city employee and now a county employee, and for several years was on my staff. Over the years, with the addition of David, they became a modern-day blended family, celebrating holidays, birthdays, graduation. Funeral service, we held at Knox Presbyterian Church at 5840 La Tierra at 11:30 a.m. He is survived by his daughters and his wife.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, members, I didn't want the week to pass. Earlier this week, laid to rest were two CHP officers from the Central Valley who tragically lost their lives in a collision on the 17th of February. They were responding to an accident at dawn on the 17th, on Highway 99 near Kingsburg. I ask we remember Juan Gonzalez and Brian Law, two great members of the California Highway Patrol who lost their lives serving California.
Thank you. Any more adjournings? To my right, now, Mr. Bloomingfield? Okay, then I'll quickly wrap things up with an adjourning motion for Janice Mosley. She was born January 22nd in 1950, so she was just a baby. She lived in Oklahoma. She grew up with loving parents and grandparents and brothers and sisters. She married her high school sweetheart, Frank, and they had two daughters, Cherie and Tasha. She temporarily attended, in fact, her and her husband, attended the University of Nebraska, and then she moved to Los Angeles, where she continued her education at UCLA, and she became a paralegal. At the time of her death, she was in Las Vegas, Nevada, and she is mourned by her mother, her two sisters, Cherie, daughter Cherie and Tasha, her sister Beverly, Jody, and Corliss Gonzalez, and four grandchildren. So, if we could please adjourn in her honor. With that said, members, this meeting is adjourned.